Hello, it is 5:00 PM on Monday, February 13th, 2023. This is the Monday Regular Board Meeting for the Monroe School District. Present are Director Whitfield, Director Barnes, Director Campbell, myself, Interim Superintendent Dr. Marcy Larson, Executive Cabinet, and members of the school district staff as well as members of the community. I want to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. Members of the public can log into the regular board meeting using the Zoom link on the Board Docs website. Can I please have everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to tonight's meeting. We are so happy to have you join us. All comments during tonight's meeting are audio recorded and will be available online on our website. This is in addition to the written minutes. Please understand that while it may appear the board is moving quickly on important matters, there have been previous discussions on these issues either in earlier meetings or in board workshops, which are also open public meetings. Each director has had ample time to study the issues, ask appropriate questions, and obtain satisfactory answers from our superintendent, her staff, or through outside research. Moving on to Agenda Item 2.05, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
A move that we approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed 4 to 0. Moving on to Agenda Item 3.01, Student Representatives.
All right, good things are going on at MHS. Start, highlight some sports. Last Saturday was crazy for sports. We had so many regional and district events. Basketball went pretty well. We didn't quite catch that game, but we have our excuses that I could go into, but I'm not going to. But they're continuing on in their tournament, so basketball is doing pretty good. Gymnastics went well. We have a couple students that are going to state, which is awesome. Wrestling, we've got Mason Fitzwater, a couple others going to state as alternates. Will Carpenter, Talon Carswell, and a few others going to state, like to actually compete, which is absolutely awesome. And in swim, Kemper Grant took 13th in districts for the 50 freestyle, which is pretty cool. And the other day, I was just walking around campus and I realized this section that I haven't seen before. So I thought you'd tell me about it, some cool programs it has. We have a massive greenhouse sitting off next to the AML, and it's pretty cool. I was, I was at robotics, so it was after school. As I was there, just the side windows slowly closed on their machine things that they had. So pretty cool. And I was asked questions later with some students who were, takes the programs there. Apparently, we have this, like gardening classes and stuff, and they've got the sale coming up and everything. So I've seen tons of pots and they're out there and they're doing good things, learning, I'm a big gardening fan, so I found it pretty awesome. And then additionally, drama is going up pretty good. They've got their castles out, and so they're performing the sound music this spring. So I'm pretty excited. I think they're gonna do awesome, so that's what I've got today.
Okay, so at Sky Valley, the, we have the kindness campaign activities this week on tomorrow, 14th and then 15th. And I think that will be in the library. There was a table set up with activities planned. And then this Wednesday, we have a chicken and taco bar fundraiser for Academy of Critical Thinking from 11:30 to 12:45, so that should be pretty good. Any questions? Kindness week, it just has, we just have activities planned this week. So like for random acts of kindness day and then throughout the week.
Questions, directors? Laura, what is your favorite act of kindness so far? Something you did and then something that maybe you received or something nice someone did for you.
So today, I saw there was these two kids that came up to our fundraiser. We do a fundraiser every Monday. We do just like a little market fundraiser. And I, this, one of the girls was standing behind and there was a little kid and she paid for his candy because he didn't have enough money to pay for it. And I just thought that was cute.
Nathan, I have a question for you.
All right.
So I am a dad of an eighth grader, and I was gonna say this for more comments, but it relates to MHS. So eighth graders got, eighth grade families got an email this week from MHS about the future Bearcat Night coming up.
Yeah.
And for all those for PPMS and HRMS families for that, which is March 1st from 6:30 to 8 o'clock.
Yep.
What do our eighth graders need to anticipate getting ready to come up to MHS if they're gonna go to the high school? What is one thing you would tell future eighth graders you'd be ready for?
So.
Or future ninth graders, they're eighth graders now, future ninth graders.
High school is fun. I mean, you get through middle school, you kind of, everyone has a rough time in middle school. That's a pretty general thing. But then you get to high school and you have way more freedom. Not as much as college, but a lot of freedom. You're able to choose a ton more classes, be able to go into clubs, which is absolutely awesome. You get to do sports. I mean, you did in middle school too, but sports are next level in high school. The examples that you have learning from people who are almost adults is pretty cool. I have so many legends that I had when I was a freshman, just looking up to 12th graders and people. And you gotta, yeah, and at the same time, you're shaping who you're gonna be for the rest of your life. You're learning all different, you're learning a ton of different skills that are gonna help you survive, yes, but also thrive. If you take advantage of high school, you can do incredible things. And it's an awesome launching, launching pattern into what you want to do. But you get to have the freedom to choose all these different classes and apps and then learn about so many things that will guide what you're going to do in the future.
That's good, because I think there's a lot of families that are probably watching tonight as well who are, have future ninth graders. And so I'm sure some of them might be getting nervous about going up to the high school. So that's really cool.
Sure, that's fair.
Thank you.
For the March 1st event, should be good.
Good.
Looking forward.
All right.
Thank, thank you, Laura and Nathan. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 3.02, Staff Recognition. I get the honor and privilege of starting this off tonight. Let me just intro, quick intro. The MSD Employee Honor Roll is our employee recognition program aimed at providing our staff with much needed recognition for their hard work. Anyone can nominate an employee for the Employee Honor Roll. All nominated staff members receive a certificate each month and are recognized on our website. At the end of the month, the Superintendent's Cabinet reviews all of the nominations and selects one employee from each employee group, certificated, classified, and administrator as the three employees of the month. In addition, we recognize the three employees of the month at a board meeting and possibly embarrass them because some of us get gross and cry babyish. Our employees for the month of January are as follows. And we'll start off with Director Barnes.
All right, now it's my turn. Okay, so I get the pleasure of introducing Brad Bear. Fire, sorry, I'm sorry, is Brad here? Brad, come on up if you would please. Brad is a career and technical education teacher at Monroe High School. Okay, bear with me here. I've got three different nominations because you are incredibly spectacular. All right, nomination number one. Brad is a passionate teacher who has invested so much into our robotics and engineering programs. He values each and every student and ensures they have everything they need to be successful in his classes. He has also rebooted our robotics club. They had an amazing first season together last year and are gearing up for this year. Brad is also forming vital relationships with community members to create strong ties with our CTE program. MSD is lucky to have him on our team. Nomination number two. Mr. Bear, fire, sorry, I'm so sorry. I'm learning, okay. Is the Monroe High School Robotics Aerospace Manufacturing and AP Computer Science Teacher. He's extremely dedicated to the students and the programs he teaches and has created a very welcoming and positive environment and programs for all students. He gives so much of his time of our class, time outside of class for robotics club and contributes to the positive and welcoming culture for all at Monroe High School. He works intentionally to provide strong and relevant program content and activities and connect students to long-term career opportunities. He is simply a joy to be around and truly loves working with our students. We are so grateful to have him at MHS. Number three. Brad selflessly gives countless hours of time and energy to lead the high school robotics team. He stays after school for hours every week and often on weekends to work with his team to get them ready for competition. Last year, he volunteered his time for this work as a new teacher to MSD. He als, he has also written and received three grants to help fund this team. In addition to all the work he has done, he also pours his entire heart into the students as both an advisor and a CTE teacher. He truly believes in all students and seeks ways to help them access learning at high levels. He creatively engages students in learning and allows them to have choice on how they demonstrate their learning in the classroom. Brad is also always willing to go the extra mile for other staff members and support students outside of his program. He is a go-to person when anyone needs help. Brad is truly an asset to our district and to MHS. Thank you, Brad, for all that you give and all that you do for the families and the students in this district. It's because of teachers like you that we have children that know that they can create any future they want to from the education that they receive. So on behalf of the board, thank you. I can't thank you enough.
It's my honor to introduce the Classified Employee of the Month is Ken Stinas. Ken is the Student Support Advocate at Hidden River Middle School and Multby Elementary School. Nomination one. The professional background Ken has brought with him to this role has been very helpful for the month of December when Hidden River needed his expertise, patience, and strength. Not only was he available to help students, but also was helping backing up staff. He also supports the Behavioral Health Team by checking in on coworkers and always bring his cheerful nature, but also his understanding to some of the intensities of the job. Nomination two. Our student support advocates are priceless, but the way Mr. Ken develops relationships and works with teams to ensure that students feel cared for is so important. He even makes sure to build relationship with younger students so they know him before they come to middle school. Thank you so much, Ken, for your work. I appreciate it.
Right, I have the privilege of doing our Administrator of the Month. Bear with me with the frog in my throat, getting over some, it's still got a hold of my vocal cords. Our Administrator of the Month is Principal Melanie Gray. Melanie, are you here? Are you online? Melanie, online? Can you check for us, Jesse? There she is. We see you, Melanie. Yeah, bring her up. We're bringing up Melanie. All right. Hello, Melanie.
Hi, everybody.
All right, this is our Salem Woods Elementary Principal. I've had the privilege of getting a tour of her building with her and her awesome staff. And she is absolutely incredible, you guys. Melanie, this is your, your nominee, nominator said, "Melanie truly cares for every child and staff member at Salem Woods Elementary, and she demonstrates that daily in a variety of areas." And yes, she does. "When it snowed, she was even found outside before the sun appeared shoveling the sidewalks." Come on. What an amazing way to demonstrate what she says about caring about all of our safety. And Melanie, something that I have noticed about you and something that your staff talks about you and your students know, you absolutely love your staff, your students, and your families. And that goes so, you're, you're an incredibly gifted administrator and very talented in your craft, but the amount of care that you have goes so far beyond. And I am so privileged that you are part of our district, and we appreciate you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Notice she's in her office, everybody at work right now, just FYI. Thank you, Melanie.
Thank you all, thank you Board Directors for those presentations. And we are on to Agenda Item 3.03, Director, District Number Four, Appointment Process. Okay, so following the resignation of School Board Director Sarah Johnson, the remaining four board members must fill the vacant School Board Director of District Number Four position by appointment. The appointed board director will serve until the next regularly scheduled board election in November 2023, at which time a director must be elected by a vote of the public for the remainder of the term, which expires in 2025. Candidates must reside within the boundaries of Director, District Number Four and be a registered voter in the state of Washington. The nomination and application window is now open and will close on Friday, February 17th at 4:30 PM. That's this Friday. You can find more information on the Monroe School District website, including the map if you need to understand or see the boundaries for District Number Four. And the candidate interviews will take place in a meeting open to the public in March. The appointment of a candidate must be approved by a public roll call vote by no less than three members of the board. I've done it. Scary, doable, doable, but scary. We encourage, we encourage you to share. If you're in the public, if you're in the community, please share that we, we have an open position. If you know someone who you think you'd be, would be perfect for this position, you are able to also nominate someone. You might want to ask permission before you nominate them. Okay, and for any other questions, please refer to our website, and there's more contact information on there as well. Okay, and Agenda Item 3.04, Audience Comments. If you still have a sheet or if you would like to make a comment, there are sheets in the back forms, sorry, and you can submit them to Holly. I have a stack. Okay, and before we get started, we'll just go ahead and read our procedure. "We welcome comments about school board and district decisions, processes, and concerns. I will take a few minutes to remind everyone how this works. Each speaker has three minutes. However, if several are here on the same topic, a representative, excuse me, may be selected for the group and speak for 10 minutes. So please identify if you are with the group so that we can go ahead and give you the allotted time. In doing so, the individuals in that group yield their time to their representative. Tonight, we will be utilizing a timer to assist in tracking each speaker's time. There will be a sound that chimes when you have 30 seconds remaining, excuse it. And then another sound will chime when your time is up. It is important to note that a separate process exists for concerns about staff. Audience comments during the school board meeting is not the forum for staff complaints. If you are here for that reason, please email any staff member and they will help you learn more about the staff complaint process. Be aware that if at any time during a speaker's comments, their words begin to approach a personnel concern, I will remind the speaker once to keep comments centered on district or school board decisions, processes, and concerns. If that speaker continues with staff-related comments, I will give 30 seconds for the presenter to immediately sum up their thoughts and return to the audience. Again, any staff member can help with how to move forward with a complaint about personnel. I, I am asking that we honor the time that is allotted for each speaker. We do have a number of speakers today and I, everyone has something really important to say. And again, would like to honor that time and that energy and that commitment to come and speak. And I ask that everyone just remain respectful as well. And we'll just go ahead and start from the top. Okay? Okay, and if you need to see a timer, if you need to know where you're at with time, please, we have it on our sheets, and then Holly will also notify you on the screen, yes. Okay, and our first one up is Robin. It's a group. So name and your relationship with the district.
Yeah, I'm Robin Hayashi. I am a sixth grade teacher. I am a citizen of Monroe taxpayer. I'm also the president of the Monroe Education Association, representing our members. Good evening. In the search for a new superintendent, the school board contacted, I'm sorry, contracted HYA to manage the process from beginning to end. Within our membership and in the community, we were optimistic to learn that an objective process would be followed and that our board would embrace walking the walk toward clear communication and transparency. A forthright and open process in Monroe, finally. Although we were not privy to know who all of the applicants ultimately were, MEA felt grateful to be invited into the process and to have some interactions with the final three candidates. WASDA, Washington State School Directors Association, a body that you all frequently make reference to, states in their Washington School Board Standards Document regarding standard number 1B4 on page four, quote, "Does the board follow a defined process for gathering input from the community, staff, and other stakeholders prior to making critical decisions?" End quote. HYA put into place such a system as referenced above for the selection of the next superintendent. And although the process was extremely rushed, it felt like we were able to share our feedback on our opinions for the best leader for MSD. We felt hopeful that our voices were being sought out and that we would be on equal footing, heard without bias. You deceived us. Please don't shake your head at me, I'm making comments. A defined process such as the one that HYA instituted is circumvented when the school board solicits feedback from a small select affinity group on Facebook during a closed executive session. The spending of a significant amount of money was approved for HYA to come to Monroe and facilitate that process. However, every bit of that effort and money is wasted when the board seeks out targeted feedback in a closed session. What decision could be more critical than the selection of our next superintendent of all times to demonstrate the utmost integrity? And to be true to the defined process? This was that time, and yet you chose not to do that. No matter how clear the importance that you stick to the process with fidelity, instead you flouted it. His selection was disproportionately influenced by Facebook friends of a single board member. And this may not have been the best selection for our whole community. This superintendent's position will forever be in question because of the flawed process, and thus you have set him up for failure before he even starts. Equally important, you disregarded the precious time that many community members put into sharing their input on the superintendent. This undermines trust and you as a board and will make our community reluctant to spend time on future efforts. Your violation of our trust has caused deep damage both amongst our members and in our community. And now by choosing to disregard this extreme breach of ethics, pretending that it didn't happen, you're perpetuating and upholding the system of discrimination that we needed to begin dismantling. Last board meeting, MEA representatives stood here and applauded you for a renewed relationship between board and teachers. One that we had hoped, promised to do, we hoped, had promised to do good things for our school, students, and community moving forward. The backdoor reaching out for focused input from your affinity group erased every bit of that effort. You've confirmed why there is such an apprehension amongst our membership in thinking that the board can do better. Today, I tell you that you've broken any belief in your integrity that we might have had in the last few weeks. Needless to say, I am rescinding our efforts to plant a tree on behalf of a collegial relationship. No more. If you choose to not acknowledge any wrongdoing or hints of blurred ethics and choose to remain on this board, may I suggest that you all do some soul searching on how you can truly serve all staff, all students, and members of the community with true ethics and true integrity that we expect from school board members. Thank you. Thank you, Robin. Can I get Melanie Ryan? Melanie, your name and your relationship to the district.
My name is Melanie Ryan. My pronouns are she, her, hers, and I'm the parent of two Monroe School District alumni and the president of, Board President of Monroe Equity Community. And I'm speaking tonight on behalf of our board. I came tonight, heeding Director Bumpus's call for respect. Director Whitfield, I am now very angry for Robin to stand up here in good faith and give her feedback to this board. for Robin to stand up here in good faith and give her feedback to this board and you to mock that with your facial expressions and your head shakes. This is why we again are here today. Stop it. We are here, and I'm shaking now because I'm angry, to address the ethical misconduct committed by Director Molly Barnes during the superintendent interview process on January 26, 2023. It would have been easy not to show up here tonight and perhaps more comfortable. It would have been comfortable to accept Director Bumpus's letter to the community as the final say on the matter. But as the great Dr. Martin Luther King once said, "The hottest place in hell is reserved for those who remain neutral in times of great moral conflict." For some, it is easy to dismiss Director Barnes's conflict or conduct because they understand it to not have violated the letter of the law. Some say, "Well, it doesn't violate the letter of the law. She didn't do anything wrong." But in the words of African-American poet Nikki Giovanni, "If now isn't a good time for the truth, I don't see when we'll get to it." Because the truth, Director Barnes, is you did do something wrong. The spirit of the Open Public Meetings Act is so clearly stated in the Legislative Declaration, the spirit of the law. And it says, "The people of this state do not yield their sovereignty to the agencies which serve them. The people in delegating authority do not give their public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know and what is good for them not to know. The people insist on remaining informed and informing the people's public servants of their views so that they may retain control over the instruments they have created." And I emphasize this last line. "For these reasons, even when not required by law, public agencies are encouraged to incorporate and accept public comment, public comment during their decision-making process." Except Director Barnes's discussions were not public. They were not open to the public. This was a small, select, special interest group invited to give feedback directly to a school board director in a closed executive session. And may I remind this school board that even today in this public session, I'm not allowed to have a conversation with you all in an open meeting. And in fact, if we go to the board's website that exists today, it says, "If you would like to share feedback with the board, you're welcome to communicate with the entire board and then superintendent via email." Again, quote, "School board members may not, may not engage in direct conversation with audience members during a meeting." That was during a meeting where you were engaging with audience members. And if you would like to ask and answer a specific question, please let us know and staff will be happy to contact you after the meeting. So may I remind this board that during superintendent interviews, the rest of the public, while having opportunity to provide feedback, did so anonymously with absolutely no invitation from any specific board member or opportunity to interact directly. Patrice Conquilleur said, "There's something radical and beautiful and deeply transformational and bearing witness to public accountability. Accountability before a community gathered for the sake of wholeness." Director Bumpus, I so appreciate the work that you've been doing to try and bring this board to a board of integrity. But your letter to this community said that building trust means acknowledging missteps and being accountable for our actions. But we emphasize, in fact, Director Barnes, there's been absolutely zero acknowledgement nor accountability on your part. None. Author Elaine Welterworth reminds us, quote, "You can't be part of the solution if you don't recognize how you are part of the problem." Director Barnes, without accountability, you are part of the problem. To the entire school board, without accountability, you are perpetuating part of the problem. And that problem is the same problem we've been bringing to you for the better part of two years. Broken trust, suspicion of intent, lack of transparency, and a disregard for all of the people you serve. We suspect that Director Bumpus's letter and Director Barnes's silence is at least in part being directed by lawyers who are counseling you down this path to avoid even the slightest acknowledgement of wrongdoing that could open the district to legal liability. This, of course, this course of action, whether it helps you avoid legal liability, does make you implicit in the improprieties. Frederick Douglass said, "Power concedes nothing without a demand. It never did and it never will." So we are here tonight to demand once again, please, Director Barnes resign. We are here to man that fellow members of her board hold Director Barnes accountable with action instead of empty and unfulfilled claims of accountability and censure her for her actions. She has demonstrated her ethics are not in line with the expectations of people she serves and that her ability to act in good faith is impaired. We in the community understand that it is more comfortable to heed the advice of legal representation and choose what is easy over what is right. It is more comfortable to stay silent, just waiting for the noise to blow over. It is more comfortable to create a narrative that each of you is a victim of an angry mob who are against you because of your personal beliefs. It is more comfortable to hide behind the manipulative cry that it's for the kids as if anyone who challenges this board is against the children. We are not. It is more comfortable to justify your actions by keeping score of how many people showed up tonight or wrote letters to speak for one side or the other. That is not what makes it right. I have 10 minutes, Chuck. It is so much harder to interrupt the embedded cycle of abuse of power in this district. Choose to take the harder path. We beg it. We demand it. In closing, you may have picked up by now, the people I quoted tonight are black men and women who have long hard fought for justice against systemic abuse of power. As we are celebrating Black History Month, we are reminded of the sacrifices they have given, even up to their own lives. It is more comfortable choice, it is a more comfortable choice to forget how simply our history connects with our present. It is a more comfortable choice to overlook how systems are created and maintained by people in power for their benefit. The members of this board continue to be one of the many small cuts that maintain these systems of power when you refuse to hold one of your own accountable to a standard of ethical excellence. Molly, this is not personal. So as we started with the great Dr. Martin Luther King, we leave you with his words as well. "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter. Disrupt the system. Do not remain silent about this matter. Hold Director Barnes accountable for violating what you are claiming that you are working so hard to rebuild." Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. Melanie Lockhart for group. And can I have you state your name and your relationship to the district?
Good evening. My name is Melanie Lockhart. I'm a parent and there's a group of people yielding their time to me tonight. You'll have to forgive me for not including their names on your sheet of paper. Since I've now been mocked across social media and right-wing radio, I'd rather not subject anyone else to that ridicule if I can help it. So you're just going to have to trust me on this one. I want to open by saying that while I've experienced a ton of personal attacks, hate, and vitriol myself in the past couple of weeks, I don't come here as a personal attack on anybody. I do not condone any personal attacks on anybody. I come here for accountability. I imagine most everyone in here tuning in tonight is probably already aware of the situation. We've had a couple people speak on it, but just in case anybody's just now tuning in, on January 26th, Director Molly Barnes took a huge legal risk by going behind the backs of everyone else involved in the closed executive session that evening. Though the public was supposed to be kept out of the closed meeting, while directors completed their final interviews of the three superintendent finalists, Director Barnes solicited private feedback from the Sky Valley Conservative Women's Group by means of a private Facebook group chat, effectively inviting just a small handful of a targeted demographic to offer input through a special avenue not available to anyone else. The Washington Coalition for Open Government recently wrote a series of tweets on the story covered by The Herald. "Well, that's a new one for us," they tweeted. Apparently, it was a new one for the Attorney General's Office, too. And the Washington State School Directors Association, Director of Policy and Legal Services reportedly told the local paper that it goes against WASDA best practices and violates the spirit of the law. So congratulations, Monroe School Board. You've effectively auditioned for a case study on open government. Now, in looking back, I will concede that I should have probably worded my initial post with, "Molly Barnes appears to have broken the law." Because it did, and at least the attorney I spoke with agreed. Excluding the public, which is the exact wording in the RCW on executive sessions, means just that, excluding the public. Not everybody except Director Barnes's friends, all of the public. The district would have had no need to consult with legal counsel in the first place if there hadn't been an appearance of impropriety and/or illegal behavior. Nothing has gone to court either, by the way, so there hasn't been any actual legal determination at this time. But sure, I could have added, "appears to have broken the law." But you see, I don't get paid for what I share. I don't have a team behind me to help me edit and carefully craft my messages like President Bumpus does with her emails to the community that talk about missteps without actually acknowledging any wrongdoing. I don't get paid to help amplify this district's communication so the community at large knows what's going on. And I certainly don't get paid to help hold this district and its elected officials accountable. Still, here I am, continuing to show up, continuing to commit my time and at times my mental health, hoping for the betterment of this district, this community, and a bright future for our children. I'm not going anywhere. Sorry to anybody who really doesn't like me, but I'm not going anywhere. I still stand by all of my words. Director Barnes did commit a violation, a violation of trust, of transparency, of honesty, of integrity, and any semblance of ethics this district clearly doesn't bother to actually enforce. And there's no getting those back without accountability. I still stand by my approach, too. Would this district have even said anything if not for my post on social media? I spoke to President Bumpus this Saturday immediately after that executive session, and I stand by, that was a good conversation. I planned to wait to see if the district would respond, at least to me privately, by end of day Monday. But then the chat got deleted later that evening. That's a felony, by the way. So whatever discussions happened that presumably alerted Director Barnes to the situation led to destruction of the chat altogether. And since at least one of those friends she found so important to solicit feedback from during executive session decided to presumably destroy evidence, I went ahead and went public the next day. Is this district going to be able to provide that chat in the public records request I made, by the way? Or did that open up a whole other slew of legal liabilities, all because an elected board director went against protocol during executive session? President Bumpus, Director Whitfield, and Director Campbell, in all of your training workshops and general expectations given by district leadership, were you directed to not ever contact anybody from within executive sessions? Yes or no? Back on December 10th, 2021, was the very first meeting following the swearing-in of all the newly elected board members. It began with a workshop called WASDA Roles and Responsibilities of a School Board Director and concluded with the new board's very first executive session to review the performance of an employee. At 5:48 PM Pacific Time, then Superintendent Blasco received a text message that read, "Remind directors about not to speak to others outside of the meeting." Now, this was mere days into the 90-day period in which newly elected officials are required to complete the full Open Public Meetings Act and public records training by law. But this text message obviously illustrates that this directive is literally OPMA 101. Integrity, honesty, transparency. Where was it? No surprises, right, President Bumpus? Were the three of you surprised to learn that Director Barnes reached out to the Sky Valley Conservative Women's Group during your executive session? The statement printed in The Herald indicates yes. Integrity, honesty, transparency. Where was it? Clearly, it's gone. You've stomped all over it. And at this point, it's all of you, because again, there's been no accountability. Let me add some additional language that may speak to you more. Whoever walks in integrity walks securely, but he who makes his ways crooked will be found out. Proverbs, Chapter 11, Verse 3. Well, you were found out. So now the community, though maybe not your preferred community, are waiting to see what you'll actually do about it. Will you take true accountability? So far, I haven't personally made any calls publicly or to this board and district on what I think should or shouldn't happen. Others have chimed in on my posts, and I've been lumped in with some of those opinions, but I haven't personally called on this board to do anything. Tonight, I will say that there is no path to restoration without accountability. You don't get to just sweep this all under the rug like nothing to see here. It'll all blow over if we just give it time. No, you were elected to uphold your oath of office and, as the RCW states, faithfully discharge the duties of the office. Those duties can be found on your very own current posting for the vacant position on this board, which links to a few places. One of them is the WASDA standards, where they list the five core principles of a school board director. The very first one is responsible school district governance. Was Director Barnes responsible in her actions? No. Under that first core principle, the very first piece is conducting board and district business in a fair and respectful, very respectful and responsible manner. If you can't even fulfill Part 1 of standard number 1, what business do you have serving on a board at all? Part 2 of standard number 1 states, "Ensuring the board is accountable and open to the public, seeking divergent perspectives in its decision-making process." Strayed from that one, too, didn't you? Then if you click the actual application link, it takes you to a profile of a school board member. The very first section of that profile is titled Values and Ethical Behavior. Within that, it states Models High Ethical Standards. What standards would those be? You've thrown those out the window. The director profile wraps up with a section titled Accountability. The last sentence states, "One who consistently operates with integrity and is accountable to the community." You can't even model this yourselves, but now you're tasked with appointing an applicant to fulfill these duties? I'm sorry, but I don't trust you. The path to restoration and repairing trust isn't impossible. I do think that this district can move forward, and obviously it has to for the sake of our kids. But in my humble opinion and the opinion of those who yielded their time to me tonight, that path forward cannot include Director Barnes on this board of directors. Now to shift gears from one final statement not related to this. "The district should reverse course and honor its commitment to students and the Montessori learning community at Malpe Elementary. We regularly hear this board and the district touting its alternative learning programs at Sky Valley Education Center, as we should. Meanwhile, its silence as another valuable alternative learning opportunity slips through unsupported and now on path to lose its upper-level elementary program next school year. Please prioritize recruiting appropriate staffing to maintain this program for years to come." Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Melanie. Lori? Hi, Lori. Can I please have you state your name and your relationship to the school district?
Yes, my name is Lori Langley, and I've lived in Monroe for over 20 years. I raised five children here in our beautiful community, and my husband and I believe that educating our children wisely is one of the most important gifts we can give them next to their faith in God and their values. I'm here because I want to voice my support to someone who shares these same values and has dedicated countless hours to helping make our schools in Monroe better and safer places to grow and learn. It's painfully obvious to many of us in this community that the only reason a vocal few are attacking her is because she shares the same values as I and many others in Monroe. My message to the school board is simple. Not only do I fully support Molly, but I hope and pray that others in this community... but I hope and pray that others in this community will rise up and vote for men and women of courage like her. Thank you for your time. And thank you for staying strong against those who seek to divide us against each other and create disunity in our community. As John Adams once said, always stand on principle, even if you stand alone.
Thank you, Lori. Ken? Ken?
Ken Udry, former resident of Monroe. I have grandkids in the district, and so I'm still interested in education here. Reading from the article in the Tribune Wednesday, February 8th, written by Michael Whitney. It sounds like he's actually a journalist that investigates. The question he wrote here was, was this, talking about the whole situation, was this illegal when the meeting is closed to the public? And the answer he wrote down was, no, say, open government experts. Morgan Dameron, the Open Government Ambesman in the State Attorney General's Office, told the Tribune he was having a hard time finding an OPA problem here because it sounds like the board member wasn't sharing information out to that Facebook group such as leaking a play-by-play play-by-play of the board's conversation or private documents. Disclosing what's behind closed doors would be an unambiguous violation. I yield my time.
Ken? Kami? Kami, your name and your relationship to the school district?
Hi, my name is Kami Thompson, and I've had kids in the Monroe School District for the last 19 years. And I currently have two attending Monroe High School. I've appreciated the direction that the school board has been going, moving forward with better communication, more opportunities for community input, and by making a sincere effort to find a superintendent to lead our district with integrity. However, I'm shocked and disappointed that you're dismissing the misconduct allegations that have been made against Director Barnes. She consulted with a private interest group during a closed school board executive session. This action was unethical and shatters the fragile trust that you guys have been working so hard to build with our community. By not condemning or issuing an apology for this action, all four of you are condoning that a private group can be given an unjust advantage to share their opinions directly during a closed session. It's an insult to the rest of us that watched the panel questions and participated by filling out the anonymous online forms provided, which I appreciate. I appreciated that opportunity. You're undermining the authenticity of your efforts to make parents feel like you care about our ideas and value our input. You need to do something to fix this and show that you actually care about the Monroe commitment to equitable access and high expectations as posted on the district website. Thank you.
Thank you, Kami. Greg? Hey Greg, your name and your relationship to the school district?
My name is Greg Acuturo. I am a parent of graduated Monroe High, or Monroe students and a grandparent of students that are currently in the Monroe School District. I'd like to start out by thanking the board for the opportunity to participate in the community input portion of tonight's open public meeting of the Monroe School District Board of Directors. Over the last several years, our nation and indeed our community has gone through some hard times that have sadly resulted in the loss of civility that should surround our collective need to find real solutions. Board members, through your time, your work has had the added challenge of keeping our schools from being dragged down into what has become a more polarized world. And instead of working towards making them a better place, and instead, you've made them a better place for work, for student learning. Thank you for your tireless efforts. It's my hope that as a community, that we will make Monroe Public Schools less polarized towards political ideologies and more unified toward making our schools a better place. A better place for student learning and a better place to work. Or to put it another way, let's make Monroe School District a shining example of a school system that is a great place to work and one that excels in teaching our children to learn not only how to read, write, and engage in STEM curriculum, but just as importantly, what civility looks like. I'd like to close by publicly thanking each one of you and by showing my support for Director Barnes, for her work, and encourage each of you to continue to seek input from the entire community as you do your work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg. Dana? Dana? Hi Dana. Your name and your relationship with the school district?
My name is Dana Scherstad, and I'm a member of the community. I pay taxes in the community. I live on Main Street. I see the little children walk to Frank Wagner Elementary every morning, so. I just, I'm here because I, it would be more comfortable, as somebody has said, to stay home. But I think that it's really important to thank you when when I feel like you've done what I voted for you to do. So thank you, Molly. I voted for you in the last election, and I voted for you because I thought that you would make decisions in the same kind of right and wrong understanding, the same kind of what's helpful and what's harmful understanding as I have. And you won that election, and so I'm glad that you are standing by that. I thank you all for doing that. It's just what I want to say. I just want to say thank you. I know that you're under a lot of ire from the community, some loud people in the community. People care about all these issues. We all care. But we have a disagreement, and I'm really thankful to you that you've stood strong and done what I elected you to do, all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dana. Heather? 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 Poor Jessie. All right, and this is Fargro.
Yes.
Okay, name and your relationship to the school district?
Hi, my name is Heather Young, and I am the proud parent of two boys in the district. I actually debated whether to speak tonight because I recognize the risk that my message will be lost among the many voices flooding the room tonight. There's a lot more faces here than we usually have. Emotions are running high, and there are a lot of people in the community who are frustrated and who feel betrayed. Others here feel the need to come to the defense of one of their own. And there's even a few who seem to thrive on unnecessary drama because some people are just awful. But this isn't about any of them. It's about you and the reason that you raised your hand to sit in that chair. You have all seen me show up night after night, year after year. I've been here at budget meetings. I've helped work to pass the levy. And members of the leadership team have heard from me from time to time when I can pass along helpful information or volunteer for something, get clarification, or to offer to work together to find and expand common ground. You see, there's no Plan B for my family. Our boys are finishing their remaining schooling in Monroe. We can't get a waiver. We can't go to private school. It's just not an option because they're both on IEPs. So we're stuck with Monroe. And that means Monroe is stuck with us. And that's why I'll do everything I can to make sure that this place is the best that it can be for all our kids. And that's why tonight I have one request for all of you. I'm here to ask for each of you to pause. As you know, both of my kids are on IEPs, so we're no strangers to what it takes to modify behavior. And we know that it's hard. It's damned hard to modify behavior. But modifying behavior starts with a pause. A pause before acting, a pause before reacting, a pause to consider which step to take or whether to take one at all. A pause to decide what you will do and how you will do it. A pause to decide what you're trying to achieve before setting out to achieve it. All behavioral change starts with a pause. So as you go through the next few days, I'm hoping that each of you will pause and reflect on how you've been doing things and how you want to do them going forward and why. Because this board conducts the oversight of our school district, and the way that that's been handled in the past really does need to change. I'm acutely aware that there are some genuine restrictions around how you operate that are outside of your control. But there are things that you can and you can choose to do differently. For example, you inherited scripts from previous problematic board members which continue to be dutifully read throughout each meeting. You very rarely discuss any actual business brought before the board before voting because according to those scripts, you've had your questions answered ahead of time. Sure, doing things that way may shorten the meeting nominally, but it does nothing to help rebuild the trust or help our community understand what you're basing your decisions on. By discussing the pros and cons of the business before the board openly, you could bring the community along with you in understanding what is happening and why. It's a simple step that could show that you're listening to the calls for transparency from all corners. And it's one of the few things I think everyone here can agree on. Similarly, when you receive updates from various members of the leadership team, it is your job to inspect the rosy pictures that you're being presented. We know there's great work being done in lots of places, and we should celebrate it. But we shouldn't be afraid to honestly apprise what needs improvement or attention. What isn't working? What should we stop doing? Where are their resources needed? What more could we be doing and where should additional investments be made? Positivity can really be a good thing, but it can also become toxic. Yes, your responsibility is to praise the good, but it's also to hold the admin team accountable for following through and corrections when necessary, and to ensure the same in yourselves. Tonight, we could be talking about starting a unified sports program like they have in Arlington and Muckelto. Or we could talk about ways to save the Montessori program. Or we could be talking about what's being done to ensure that every school in the district has running water, because guess what? They don't. But until you are up to the job of holding yourselves and other members of the leadership team accountable, needless drama will continue to disrupt the work that our kids desperately need and deserve to have you do. I know it's going to be a long night, like so many others here in the past few years, and I thank you all sincerely for the work that you're doing. I know that it is quite thankless. But your efforts are often hamstrung by nights like this. So as you go through those next few days, I hope that you will take a few minutes to yourselves and reflect quietly and consider what changes that you want to make personally and as a board, and how you want to go forward from here, because we've got a lot of work to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather.
I'd like to make a motion for a five-minute recess.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we'll go ahead and return in five minutes at 6:09 PM. Oh, put on it, sorry. All in favor? Four to zero, we will return at 6:10 PM, 6:05. Thank you. Nine more audience comments unless someone is going to. Okay. All right, so our next, or it's 6:11 PM. We have no online ones, right? I have one that I will be reading. And our next person is Brian. Okay, Brian, and okay, name and relationship to the school district?
Hello, my name is Brian Cronin. I have been in the, I've had kids in the school district for 32 years, 40-plus kids. Still have two in the schools right now. First of all, I want to say awesome job to our Sky Valley and our high school representatives. Great to see you guys here. Love to see you participating. Good reports, by the way. Great for you. To the board, I would ask why we don't have a representative from Leaders in Learning? Don't know if there's something else. I know you can't answer questions, but I thought I would ask that. Tonight, I'm here again talking about what everybody else is talking about. I am not a lawyer, so I am not even going to go into the legal aspects of it because I can't. I'm not a judge. That has nothing to do with it. However, at the company I work for, I have been on several hiring panels for multiple years. While you're on a hiring panel, pretty much goes kind of like what you guys did. We solicit resumes, people to apply for the job. We review the resumes. We down-select to usually five to seven people. We do our interviews with those five to seven people. And after each interview, we go into a closed-door hearing over that person. We judge each person based on the resume that they gave us and the questions we asked. We have a standard set of questions we ask each of the representative, each of the applicants. I will say, if what happened with the school board happened at my company, I would be fired. There's not even a question about it. If there is any concept or perception of an ethical conflict, I would be fired. The person that we hired would not be hired. They would be fired as well because of the perception of an ethical complaint, issue. That goes without saying. I've had boards where some person didn't realize it, and we got into a fourth applicant, and they knew the fourth applicant's family. They had to just remove themselves from that applicant. We had to remove all their comments for all the other applicants, and we had to go over each of those applications again with the reduced board. There's no options that we have. I expect the same thing from the school board. There should not be any perception of an ethical question, because if there are, you have problems with the person coming in. Somebody had said it earlier, the person being hired now has a cloud under them. I also want to say, of the resumes that I read, I really liked the superintendent. It's not that, and it's not a issue with one person or the other or their beliefs. It's the perception of the ethical application. Ten seconds? Okay, I want to thank the board for this time and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Brian. Cynthia Ladd?
Thank you.
Okay. Hi Cynthia, your name and your...
I'm Cindy Ladd. I have two grandsons in the district going to Frank Wagner. First thing is I would like to commend you for hiring Mr. Woodward as our new superintendent. I know it was a long and arduous task, made more so by your resolve to include the Monroe community in the process. That was a great step toward healing of mistrust. But no good deed goes unpunished. Am I right? Your noble intentions have been marred by a few missteps. First, you reserved a spot, and this may sound like a surprise to you because it's not what everybody else is saying tonight. You reserved a spot on the Monroe Community Interview Panel for a faith leader, specifically a Christian faith leader. This might be viewed as a violation of the neutrality portion of the Lemon Test established by the US Supreme Court in Lemon versus Kurtzman, nineteen seventy-one. And of the endorsement test established in Lynch versus Donnelly, nineteen eighty-four. In that decision, Justice Sandra Day O'Connor noted that the Establishment Clause prohibits the government from making adherence to a religion relevant to a person standing in the political community, thereby conveying a message to non-adherence that they are outsiders. Secondly, a member of the Monroe community, Crystal Dahl, said that she was informed by someone close to the hiring decision that all three finalists are Christian. It's a violation of the Federal Equal Opportunity Employment Act for an employer to ask about the religious affiliation of job candidates. And if the employer somehow became aware of the candidate's religious affiliations, the law requires this information to be kept confidential. Additionally, this potentially violates Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, which is, discusses employment discrimination based on religion. Now individually, either of those actions raises a serious legal and ethical question. But combined, they send a message that one must be a publicly practicing Christian in order to be seriously considered for a position in the Monroe School District. Thirdly, third misstep was a violation of trust for the board to establish a procedure to gather anonymous feedback from the community and then for one board member to circumvent that procedure by joining a conservative Christian women's chat on Facebook during executive session, thus giving greater weight to her friends' opinions because of their relationship with her. Now, I believe you are trying to heal the rift between Monroe School District and the public. But missteps like this can erode the trust that you've worked so hard to build. The damage can be minimized by acknowledging your errors and taking clear steps to make amends. When you tell us that you believe there was no technical law broken, it does nothing to convey your understanding that your actions were wrong or that you have any intention to prevent a repeat of those actions. Methods count. It matters as much how you do things as what you accomplish. Now, unrelated to that, I wrote a letter to this board and some others in, on January twenty-third, including a note to the Bullying and Harassment Compliance Officer, asking you to make known what actions you are taking beyond the minimum required by the state to reduce the racism and bullying in Monroe schools. That letter to you has remained unanswered, and I would appreciate it if you did respond to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Janessa? Did I say that right? Janessa? Diane?
Hi.
Hey. Okay. Can I have you please state your name and your relationship to the school district?
I am a parent of a first grader at Mount B Montessori, and I'm speaking on behalf of a parent and all the other parents in Montessori group. Just give me a second. This is kind of really last minute. Was not expecting to be up here tonight. Okay. Um, on Monroe School District's website, the Monroe commitment to every student includes powerful instruction, equitable access, and high expectations. The power of Montessori is consistency. When Montessori is supported publicly, it creates equity. A high bar is met by what Maria Montessori calls an atmosphere of cooperation rather than competitiveness that creates a great sense of community and respect. Because of this, the program supports all students with many different learning styles and struggles. Kids find belonging there and can be seen acting out the Monroe commitment to each other every day. By shutting down the upper elementary section of the Montessori program, the district fails to deliver on their side of the commitment. Students leaving lower elementary Montessori classes for traditional gen ed or traditional education not just have their community shaken, they will face holes in their learning due to a difference in curriculum. To highlight one example, students in fourth and fifth grade, Montessori have lessons to strengthen their spelling. In general ed, spelling is focused on earlier. Monroe School District says they value and foster the community's involvement in the learning process. Parents feel unseen and unheard when the administration holds community meetings during normal working hours, giving little advance notice and shows contempt during meetings. The district asks parents to blindly submit upper enrollment intent for the program to continue without a qualified teacher in place. All this does, all of this does not build community trust, especially after the district didn't handle events well in the program last year, which led to Mrs. Height's departure. Unfortunately, the administration missed an opportunity to hire a highly qualified Montessori teacher with an out-of-state teaching certification, instead opting for a first-year teacher with zero Montessori experience. Montessori.edu says, "The real value of Montessori takes long and thorough training for the adult." Hiring an unqualified teacher resulted in an unhealthy learning environment that caused parents to pull their children out of the program and some out of the school entirely. "Montessori students should not take the brunt of the district's failure to properly hire. Instead, Monroe School District should promptly hire a Montessori-qualified and experienced teacher and continue the upper elementary section. The hiring advice of the current Montessori teachers should be recognized as critical to success. If Monroe School District focuses on their commitment, enrollment will naturally follow." Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. John?
John Stewart, father of a couple of students here in Monroe School District, also my grandkids. And I think it's probably important to let the board know that I am very familiar with public education. I taught in public high schools, and I'd have to say, I say this humbly, in what is globally recognized as the finest school system in the world. I'm not, hey, I was there with the other teachers, okay? In Finland, five different high schools. And also evening school, adult school, and trade school. So I have some familiarity with public education. I think it's become quite clear confidence in publication, in public education in this nation is suffering greatly, okay? And anybody that doubts that is not familiar with the current news. I would like to make it absolutely crystal clear to this board that I support you one hundred percent in what you have done, not only in hiring Mr. Woodward, but also in support of Molly Barnes and what she's done in, in, what she's done is she's, she's asked for parental support and input in the school system hiring and the school system dealings generally, which is absolutely critical, in my opinion, in our time. And I think there's very good reason to be concerned about public education. Parents have choices. One of my nine children, incidentally, did, did take alternative school, totally out of the Snohomish or Monroe district, okay? And I could see why, okay? This board and the direction of the school district, I would have to say, has, has increased, again, my support and confidence in public education. To me, it's absolutely critical. My father was also involved in education, public education at the University of Washington as an ophthalmologist. He did the training there. He was, he was very big on public education. If he saw this, what's happening in society, he wouldn't support it much. I know he wouldn't. But I'll tell you this, I, I, I want to extend my deep gratitude to this board for having the fortitude, the guts to stand up and support public education by listening to what the parents want to say and what they want for their children. So I personally thank you. And I speak, not only, I know, look, I know I've talked hundreds of parents. I also want to make one other point. In my career at Verizon, which I'm now retired, I did dozens and dozens of structured interviews. Okay, I know what they are, and there were no violations. None. Not to where you would say, this, this should not have happened, okay? And I am familiar with it. And so the, you know, the, this hyperbole about having done something wrong, I completely disagree. I want to thank you for, for going the extra step and getting parental input on this critical hiring in our time. It represents a very positive change for public education. Look at what's happening even to Bellevue. They're closing schools. Why? Because parents care about what their children learn. And I think we got a room full of them here. I hope we do, parents that are concerned. So again, I'm not gonna, I didn't come here with a prepared statement, with, you know, quotes from historical figures or anything else. Okay, I'm telling you from my heart what I, how I feel about this, and I also know there are numerous parents in our community, incidentally, a vast majority that support the decisions and the direction of this board. So I want to thank you. That's about all I have.
Thank you, John. Thank you, John. I'll go ahead and read a statement. It's an online form from Michelle Thomas. It says, I don't, is Michelle Thomas here? Okay. "Is Facebook chat considered an appropriate channel of communication available to all? If the answer is no, I request a censure of Director Barnes for using this medium while executive session has been called through the entirety of an executive session." Thank you, Michelle. Um, and next up is Jessica Olson.
Hi, Jessica. Can I have you state your... Hi, your name and your relationship to the school district?
Okay, so my name is Jessica Olson, and my relationship to the school district is that I'm a state taxpayer. I'm also a former school director from the Everett School District where I was beloved. And I'm a key award winner from the Coalition, Washington Coalition for Open Government. So I don't pretend to be an expert on the open public meeting, but I do know quite a bit about it. And one of, one of the first items I'd like to address here, I got a few little notes I took while I was listening. Need to let you know, the board can't prohibit public commenters from making complaints about employees. That's illegal. You can say anything you want up here. That's number one. I guess I'll start. First comment I heard from was from the MEA, and I thought it was really rich that she was talking about trust after her union kept kids out of school for, you know, a year and a half, learning at home, damaging them. Well, she took care of her own sinecure. Probably half of you guys sitting at home in your pajamas, drink with coffee cups in front of the, yeah, yeah, we'll talk. And second gal that got up here was pretty upset Monroe Equity or something like that. She had a lot of quotes. They were all pretty cool. I'd like to quote Sigmund Freud, "Sometimes a scar is just a cigar." Let's talk about the meeting. Everybody seems to be under the mistaken impression that during an executive session, nobody can take any input. That's not true. The executive session is there to make sure that what's being discussed doesn't improperly get outputted to the public. Real estate, you know, you're talking about a kid who's got some discipline issues, privacy, or that to get out, then you'd be in trouble, perhaps legally, perhaps ethically. There is no prohibition on taking any input in an executive session. It's no different than if she happened to turn on CNN and they had a news bulletin about the superintendent candidate. It's no different if right before somebody walks into the meeting, somebody whispers, hey, I really like so-and-so. So that's number one. Number two, no elected official is under any obligation to share private input that they've received from a citizen. Totally different if there's a meeting and people are taking the mic. But as an elected official, if my neighbor says something to me, if I'm on Facebook with my group and they tell me something, hey, do this, do that, I have no obligation to share that with the other board members. There's no law requiring me to do so, and I'm breaking no ethics, okay? So let's get that straight. I do find it ironic. So Molly, I think you're to be commended for taking input. I mean, people elected you, people voted against you. The people that voted for you voted for you, probably to do what you're doing. Okay, that being said, I do have a problem from an OPMA standpoint, what occurred after that. Unfortunately, Director Bumpus, you sent out an email, and let me see if I can quote it here. In the email, you sent to the entire, you know, people in the district. So it carried the weight of, you know, you were definitely notifying all the citizens. "As publicly elected school board directors, we are obligated to uphold the law. We assure you that we are taking necessary steps to determine if there are any OPMA violations." When you took that step, that's an action. Did you hold a board meeting to take that action? I wrote you in an email asking, you didn't respond to me. So either you board members got together and decided outside of an open public meeting that you were going to investigate Director Bumpus, and then you took action, action and can, you know, commence the action of the investigation. You did that, that's a violation. That's what you guys should be concerned with, okay? What was the last thing I was gonna say here? Oh, WASDA. How can I forget? WASDA, okay? Do not follow WASDA. Follow the law on what your job is, which is a lot different than what WASDA... Follow the law on what your job is, which is a lot different than what WASDA says. WASDA is a political body and a lobbying organization masquerading as a state agency. Don't follow WASDA, follow the law. I think you'd have a screw loose to follow WASDA. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. John? Different John? Is it, do I have two John Stewarts in the room? Okay. You know, John, maybe if it was a shorter meeting. Janelle? Hey, Janelle. Name and relationship to the school district?
My name is Janelle Lewis and I have seven children here in the district. I am not gonna be talking about what everybody's up here talking about today. You know why? Cause at the end of the day, y'all gonna do what you do. I'm not gonna sit up here and tell you what you should do, what you shouldn't do. That's on you, whatever. But I am gonna talk about Black History Month. How many know it's Black History Month? Mm-hmm, that's what I'm here to talk about. Y'all knew that, huh? Yes, I am here to talk about Black History Month every February. Should actually be all year long and we actually have shirts that have the month crossed out and it says all year long, 24/7/365. But I want to come up here and just personally invite Director Whitfield, Director Campbell, Molly. I'd like to invite you guys to Black Movie Series Sunday at Galaxy Theater. Next Sunday, we'll be showing Just Mercy, four o'clock. The last Sunday, we're gonna be showing Teal at six o'clock. I do want to give a shout out to Director Bumpus, HR Director Dan Johnson in the house, wave your hand, woo! And even Mayor Thomas came out during our first showing. We watched Harriet last, no, Sunday before last. It was just awesome. It was awesome to see the community come out and support. I'd like to invite everyone here. Come on out, it's free of charge. Monroe Equity Community, the lady that was up here speaking, and they actually partnered with us and Galaxy Theater. So come on, it's free of charge. We invite everyone to come and just learn some of that good old black history. I do, however, hold on, wanna leave you with this scripture. It is Luke 1248, cause I think a comment before said that, so I think I kinda lied, cause I'm kinda, gonna kinda talk about that. A comment was said that Molly was being attacked because of her beliefs and, you know, and, and you love the Lord and all that and we love God and all that. I want to let you know, I'm a believer. I'm a believer. I love God, but I will also tell you about yourself, right? It says, hey, shun the very appearance of evil. We've gotta do that. So God doesn't require us to be quiet. He requires us to be humble, be kind and be loving. He doesn't require, we can disagree, we can disagree all day, but we still need to be kind and be loving. And so I want to leave you with Luke 1248 that says, "But the one who does not know and does things deserving punishment will be beaten with feebles. From everyone who has been given much, much will be demanded. And from the one who has been entrusted with much, much more will be asked." We do one more thing. James Baldwin, he said, "I can't believe what you say because I see what you do." Have a good night.
Thank you, Janelle. Last one, Natalie.
Hi, my name is Natalie Nima. I spent my public education as a student here in the Monroe School District and I worked for the district while still attending college. My husband and I have five kids, one who just graduated and four more who are enrolled in Sky Valley. I'm here today to support Molly Barnes, who has consistently and sacrificially represented a large portion of our community, like me, who want to be involved and are dedicated to our children's education. I'm also here because I wanted to make sure that she got the public thanks she deserves. My father once sat on this board, so here's what I know. These people get paid a nominal fee, barely anything, per meeting. They spend hours preparing, commit time and energy away from their families, continuously striving to give students active access to a safe and excellent education. In short, they're dedicated to make Monroe School District and our surrounding community better. Individuals like those who tried to turn recent events into controversy are wasting the board's time and misleading the community. Stop trying to stir up false controversy concerning our elected board members. They represent our community, you don't. Thank you, board members, for your time and our commitment to our children's education.
Thank you, Natalie. Anyone like to still accept public comment? Anyone else? Thank you for using your voices and for sharing with us your concerns tonight. Moving on to agenda item 4.01, we have the enrollment predictions and budget and our presenter is Brenda Hunt, the Monroe School District Chief Financial Officer. Hi, Brenda.
Good evening. So this evening, we're gonna start our 2324 Budget Development Cycle. And I wanted to go through information as we see it today. This slide represents our annual budget cycle. I made it for the Budget Advisory Committee to try to demonstrate what our cycle looks like. As you can see, it never ends. It just goes around. Today, we are kind of in the winter, winter, spring area. We have done our student enrollment projections based on our January enrollment. The reason why we use January is because it's the month that most closely resembles year end traditionally. We have projected expenditures based on very, everything's based on an assumption, very little true information, but it gets us into the ballpark and it lets us know approximately where we're at. We are looking at state and federal revenue projections and variances based on the very limited information that we have today. We established a Budget Advisory Committee. We have had two meetings in January. Wednesday night will be our third. And essentially, right now, we are in the learning process. We focused originally on where our revenues come from. We're focused, we focused on where our expenditures come from. And then the next couple of meetings, we're learning about budget from our program leads, people that are over our programs are coming in and talking about what they're doing with their resources that they have, what their staff is and what their role is in school district education for our students. Also attached to the board agenda this evening is our budget parameters. It's the first reading, we won't go over that tonight, but if you would review it so we could talk about it at our next meeting and either add to it, revise it, or start over with it. But essentially, those are my walking papers. It tells me what you're expecting from me as well as exec cabinet and the superintendent regarding our budget parameters. The rest of the cycle is preparing the budget and adopting the budget and then reviewing our actuals against our, our projections in the fall. So legislative session is a long session this year, 105 days. It started on January 9th and it will continue through April 24th, 23. We aren't anticipating a, an extension this year, however, it's always possible. We should be getting the House and the Senate budgets relatively soon, which will provide another layer of information for us moving forward. April is our deadline for decisions regarding what we have to do to balance our educational program. The reason why April is the deadline is because we have a state mandated May 15th deadline for our certificated staff and notification regarding any changes regarding staff has to be out by the end of April to the bargaining units. Our first reading or budget hearing is August 14th with budget adoption scheduled for April 28th. So our enrollment projections. These enrollment projections are relatively flat, which means that there's very little change. There's not enough change to really influence our certificated staffing. But for 2223, we budgeted 4,590 in our traditional buildings. That's what drives staffing. We, as of January, we had 4,559 and we are projecting eight additional students, 4,567 for our average for next year. Then we have Sky Valley and Leaders and out of district students and Running Start. So what we will build our budget on is 5,519 FTE, unless there's a dramatic change in enrollment between now and then that we have to take a look at to modify our enrollment. This is our enrollment trends. And so the ones that have green at the top are actual numbers. The blue are budgeted or projected numbers. So as you can see, I chose 1819. That's our last full year prior to COVID. The reason why I did not choose 1920 is because we only had actual enrollment for part of the year and then the state estimated enrollment after that. And so 1819 was our last full year of pre-COVID. So as you can see, between 1819 and 2021, which was our first year back, we lost 625 FTE. We lost an additional 173 in 2122. And then our actuals for this year go down even more. And so it's important for you to understand that like many other districts in the state of Washington, Monroe too, lost students. And it's time, as far as OSPI is concerned, for us to make that adjustment and to realize that some of those students may not come back. This is our new enrollment base and that we need to plan accordingly moving forward. This gives more, it does all the math for you. So between 1819 and January of 23, we lost 1,040 FTE. That includes the 340-ish that we've lost as a result of the closure of Shoreline Community College and Everett Community College. So the number is around 710-ish, 717 for our traditional buildings. 2324's budget to 2223's budget is a loss of 24. And then 23, the actual is just a loss of eight students. So the difference is eight between what we have right now and what we're planning on for next year. We have huge decreases in Running Start. So we know that our students are not leaving our traditional buildings and going to Running Start. Running Start is also losing students. And so big deviation. And so the funding for the school district is primarily based on our enrollment. So with a loss that big, the Monroe School District, like many of our neighbors, have adjustments that we have to make because of the revenue lost due to lost enrollment. So some of the current budget challenges that we have are similar for many, many, many districts in the state of Washington. First and foremost is the loss of enrollment. Second is that during the process of helping districts during COVID, we received a lot of federal dollars and that masked the loss of revenue with new one-time dollars that went on for two years so far. So those reduced federal dollars are, they're leaving our budget. Also, another, another result of COVID in the past couple of years is inflation has gone really high. So the things that we can purchase with every dollar is significantly less. Things cost more. Projected IPD, the implicit price deflator, that is inspected, expected to be, when I, when I created this, it was five and a half percent. I learned this morning that legislation is actually talking about a 3.8% IPD, not a 5.5. And they're legislating right now that they're gonna always use the prior year that allows us the plan. And so this morning, it was 3.8. Nothing's passed, nothing's been adopted, so it could change. But that tells you how much it varies from day to day. So IPD drives, one, it drives revenue for what the state funds and it also drives our costs as far as what we've negotiated for our staff members. And so we always have to keep an eye on IPD cause our prices go up, our costs go up. And then increased student needs post-COVID. We all know that students lost learning time during COVID. We know that there's been a big push towards social emotional learning to try to bridge the gap that kids found themselves in during COVID. Behavioral problems and the student of today is different than the kids two years ago. So those are all the challenges that the school district is facing with less resources. So the revenue forecast, again, this is 100% based on assumptions at this point. Everything in this, the local taxes, the increase is because when we budgeted last year, we budgeted for one fall. we budgeted for one fall collection time. Moving forward for next year, because our voters said yes, thank you voters. Um, moving forward, we're budgeting for a levy for all year. So that is a plus for our revenue. However, our special federal dollars, we're taking out the federal S R dollars moving forward. We will still have approximately two and a half million that we can offset some of our deficits for. But moving forward, our goal is to move one-time cost to S R moving forward and to address as much of the loss of enrollment as possible for next year. We had a budget committee a year ago. Excuse me, and our goal was to cut seven million dollars during our process last year, which was based on our enrollment loss. You know, cut it all at once and then the board graciously allowed us to build a budget that allowed us to use seven million of fund balance. So last year we used half of that seven million. Um, but the seven million that we were going to reduce in practice, on paper, we reduced seven million. In practice, we reduced about half. So we took care of half of our enrollment issue a year ago for twenty three, twenty four. And so our projected revenues, again, I use five point five percent I P D for salaries that were either bargaining or they don't have a uh, price inflator in a contract. So like our district level administrators or our non-reps or um, P S E is bargaining this year. So I use five point five for those folks and I use what was in the contract for teachers and our O Ps. For benefits, supplies, services and capital outlay, I used a flat three percent. Some instances it will be higher, some instances it will be lower. But in this assumption, I'm assuming that the average will be around three percent. And so revenues less expenditures is that half that we were unable to reduce for twenty three, twenty four. And so that's that three point six seven million dollars that the um, budget committee will discuss. And I will get a sense of what the committee's priorities are. Um, exec cabinet will work to discuss efficiencies, effectiveness and priorities. And that's where the board comes in with the parameter page. What are the board's priorities? What do they want us to, what do you want us to focus on as we build this budget? Um, I do want to remind that although this says three point six billion, that number is not right. That number is based on my assumptions. It's a, it's gets us into the ballpark so that we can start having conversations. But legislative action will change those numbers. We're hopeful that our revenues will be higher. We're hopeful that legislation will be passed that will increase the percentage that we get for special education. And so the amount of excess expenditures over revenues will be reduced. We're hoping that legislation will take a look at transportation and bridge that gap as well and offset that with some additional revenue. Both of those will reduce that negative amount naturally. So we're hopeful that legislation will help us with fixing the statewide problem. And that's what we met with reps from O S P I to talk about last week. Is that this isn't a Monroe School District problem. This isn't another school district problem. This is a statewide issue. And this isn't a result of anything that we have done or anything that we haven't done. This is just a fact that we have fewer students and that now is the time to address it. And we did a great job taking care of half of it a year ago. But we have to ultimately address that problem moving forward. So future forecasts. Again, nineteen twenty, twenty twenty one, twenty one, twenty two are all actuals. Actual beginning fund balances, actual ending fund balance. Twenty two, twenty three budget org is what was on the F one ninety five that you adopted last August. The green column is what I'm projecting twenty two, twenty three to be this year. Um, because the board has authorized us only to spend that ninety eight million, four hundred and twenty eight thousand. That number is consistent in both columns, the budget and the projected. I may have to come and do another budget extension in a month or so. Um, because of, again, S R dollars that are still in there. But we are projected in this forecast to be positive rather than three point three million negative. So our fund balance will end about where we had planned it to start when we planned our twenty two, twenty three budget. Does that make sense? In our twenty three, twenty four, it's using the revenues that I have projected plus expenditures that I have projected. And the ending fund balance that would result if the school district made absolutely no adjustments. And my numbers were one hundred percent spot on with the projection. That's what it would look like, but the school district will make adjustments, we will have conversations. Legislation will make decisions. And then these numbers will become more refined as we go through the budget process. So plans moving forward, we'll continue to work with the Budget Advisory Committee. My goal is to invite those that are still attending in May to continue with the Budget Advisory Committee round the, around the year and to beat a twelve-month non-stop budget advisory committee. Um, district leadership will evaluate programs for effectiveness and efficiencies and evaluate our priorities using board input and ultimately present a balanced budget to the board for adoption in August. That's all I have. Any questions?
Always for you Brenda. And I take copious notes when you speak. I appreciate, first of all, the attention to detail that you give and the asset you are to our district because you've been able to just about have a crystal ball on the legislature and their funding, which is pretty impressive because I don't even think they know what they're doing after. Um, couple of things, uh, the issue really for us and not just us, you're right, it's a state issue of um, lower enrollment, which is significant. There's a few questions I have. One, and these may take time for you to answer, but these are questions I would love to get answers moving forward. Um, April deadline for us to have our um, decisions for balance for budget yet legislation, legislator session is longer this year, it ends in April twenty fourth. We have to have that decision made before May fifteenth. We would love to have that for our staff long before that, so that, but that is a three-week window that we have to thread the needle. So how are we going to, um, what I'm curious is how are you going to thread that needle? Is it decisions that we are able to make up until the moment? I know staying, I know you stay up to date with the decisions they're making along the process. But are they going to allow us to keep a simple loop on that? So that's one question is, how can we make sure that we're, we can say, hey, we're right alongside that? And that way we let our staff know as well um, for any changes we need to make. One of the other questions I have for you is, uh, do you predict, do you predict a, do you predict a plateaued lower enrollment uh, for us, because we look at, we have a spike and drop, but the predictions that you're giving looks like that is still a drop, but it's tapering off to some degree. What are you using to, to suspect that? I know to some degree we don't know, is that just the way it's been moving or what are you, how are you predicting that for next year?
Okay, your first question on um narrowing down the predictions and getting closer to actuals. We will start doing that as soon as we get the Senate budget, which should be out relatively soon. And then typically within a week or two of that, we have the House budget. The conference budget that's adopted at the end of April, hopefully, will be a compromise of those. So we usually look at those budgets to say this is what it is if it's closer to the Senate budget. And this is what it is if it's closer to the House budget, so that we're in the ballpark and we can make good decisions. When we make decisions, we always have a, if we have extra revenue, this is what we're going to add back in. And if we have to reduce more, this is what our priorities are to reduce more. So once we're in the ballpark, we still have our list to quickly draw from. Um, so we start refining our forecasts as soon as as um, we start getting information from the state.
And that's the budget parameters is gonna help you with that process if we need to cut anything as well or priorities?
In theory, yes, yeah.
Is that on the agenda for next meeting, the budget parameters?
It can be.
That we can look over that and give feedback? That is the first document in item four point zero one. Yeah, it's also here. Okay, so we can go over that and give some feedback on that, it'd be wonderful for next meeting. Um, the next question was on the plateau.
The plateau for enrollment, as you can see from this graph, this chart here, our K five enrollment is going up. That's huge because that goes through all the grade spans. So as long as your K five is going up, your district is on a positive influx. Um, your nine twelve, our nine twelve, um, hopefully it will stable off, stable out, but we've been on this trend that we're losing around a hundred kids roughly every year for the last ten years. I mean, that's normal for the high school now, I don't know why, but that's normal for the high school. Six, eight traditionally stays pretty flat because they get feeder from our elementaries. So um, the fact that elementaries are up, that's a positive outlook. That's more kids coming into our school system. And so do I see it as going down every year? No, between last year, between this year's budget and our January twenty third enrollment, we're down eight kids, that's predominantly at the high school. And um, we're down large numbers, if we look at twenty three to twenty four budget, forty four, but that's that's mostly running start, we have forty five down at running start. So we're, we're okay, we're flat, we're not having huge increases, but we have new kids coming into our system and then we have the graduating classes going out.
So with, over the years, our drop in enrollment, increased inflation, increased A D P, increased costs with different things. That narrows what we can do, see that you have a, just under a hundred million dollars for your revenue forecast and just over one point three, out of the three million for projected expenditures, leaving an almost three point seven million dollar deficit. But I also noticed that you were looking over there, will we have extra funds in our fund balance without touching our minimum? Is it six point seven percent is our floor?
Well, that's what it is for this projection. However, um, our fund balance, are you talking about our policy? Is five percent plus one million, one hundred fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay, beyond that, um, with where we're at with our, with our, um, with our levy funds as well, is there money to be able to make up for that as well? With the, if, if, if your numbers were to play out in the hypothetical of three point six, three point seven?
We still, like I said, um, we still, as a separate over here pot of money, we still have approximately two point five million in S R three dollars that we're not going to use this year. We're pulling that out and we're setting aside for next year that will help bridge the gap in the event that we wanna do this over two years. Or to use strictly for one-time expenditures next year. And as we move forward, we'll be able to make that decision as to whether or not we need it this year or we can do the whole reduction in one year.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Any other questions? I'm excited to see that the Budget Advisory Committee has started so early in that work.
They're a great committee.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're a great committee.
I'm excited that we're getting that community input in on this. Thank you so much Brenda, I feel like I speak a third language because of you. Okay, moving on to agenda item five point zero one, is there a motion?
I move the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the Freyland's Elementary Acoustic Upgrade Project Completion.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the Freyland's Elementary Acoustical Upgrade Project Completion. Discussion. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed four to zero. Agenda item five point zero two, Sky Valley Education Center Playground Project Completion, is there a motion?
I move the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the Sky Valley Education Center Playground Project Completion.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the Sky Valley Education Center Playground Project Completion Discussion.
I just want to make one point about this and then we'll probably get a chance to talk about it as well, I know it's Sky Valley. It's awesome, I would love as, if we could include some of the, um, I know we're getting the letters, we're getting the, the notices and things like that. It means, I love extra pictures of some of them too. If we could have those in there, if some of our upgrades, um, Vic, if we can get some of that, that'd be awesome. I would love to see some of that because some of them, we have different things that are happening all at different times. Even if we have a before and after of some of the spots, it'd be really nice and helpful to see that. And even having that in the public record would be probably helpful for our community.
I would like a picture of Director Campbell going down the slide.
The dinosaur tail. I might break it.
For, you know, for about a choose. Okay.
Erin, we'll get a picture of that.
All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed four to zero. Moving on to agenda item five point zero three, Sky Valley A S B Change Fund, is there a motion?
You know, when Sarah was here, one time we had a, this is a subpoint. We had a little tally who would make the motions, which side, and we won a couple of times. But you guys mostly dominated, so with that, I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the Sky Valley A S B Change Fund.
Is there a second? Second. There is a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the Sky Valley A S B Change Fund Discussion. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed four to zero. Agenda item five point zero four, consideration of donations, is there a motion?
I move the Monroe School District Board of Directors accepts and approves donations received.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors accepts and approves the donations received discussion.
Yes, I just want to say thank you to our very, very, very generous community, the Bearcat Pride, Allison Coon, Allison Coon Kirk, Monroe Performing Arts, Monroe Booster Club. The seed money that was donated for the Montessori Pilchuck Autobots Society, these are all in here of just, and if I missed anything, I'm sorry. We have a generous community that is really just investing in a lot of various areas of our, for our students. And that's a huge sacrifice, a lot of people's parts of fundraising and donating. And I just want to say thank you on behalf of the board for investing in our students, that's really cool.
I'll go ahead and read them off. Okay, the Bearcat Pride donated a monetary grant in the amount of seven hundred dollars for the sole and express purpose concessions, volunteer payout. Allison Coon Kirk donated a monetary grant in the amount of five hundred dollars for the sole and express purpose of benefiting Monroe High School students and staff. Monroe Performing Arts Boosters donated a monetary grant in the amount of two thousand one hundred and seventy dollars and thirteen cents for the sole and express purpose of band trips. Monroe Booster Club donated a monetary grant in the amount of three thousand dollars for the sole and express purpose of purchasing Rydell helmets. Seed money was donated, seed money donated a monetary grant in the amount of one thousand one hundred and forty five dollars for the sole and express purpose of S V C Montessori Adolescent Permaculture Garden. And the Pilchuck Audubon Society donated a monetary grant in the amount of five hundred dollars for the sole and express purpose of the outdoor garden and bird feeding station project. Amazing. Awesome. Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed four to zero. Moving on to agenda item six point zero six, Approval of a Superintendent Consent Agenda, is there a motion?
I move Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items listed and presented on the Superintendent Consent Agenda dated February thirteenth, twenty three.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items listed and presented in the Superintendent Consent Agenda dated February thirteenth, twenty twenty three, discussion. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed four to zero. Board Consent Agendas, Agenda Item seven point zero two, Approval of the Board Consent Agenda, is there a motion?
Sarah, we're winning, if you're watching this. I know it's going to make her smile. I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items listed and presented on this Board Consent Agenda dated February thirteenth, twenty twenty three.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items listed and presented in the Board Consent Agenda dated February thirteenth, twenty twenty three, discussion. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed four to zero. Moving on to agenda item eight point zero one, Board Reports and or Comments. Anyone like to go first? Director Campbell.
I got a lost engine in my throne now, so hopefully I can talk. I have a couple of things I just wanted to bring to the public's attention as well on our board. Coming up, I wasn't able to go to the first two showings of Black History Month movies that are in Galaxy Theaters. Want to thank the community for their involvement, making that free to the community. Coming up on the nineteenth of February, six P M, Just Mercy is going to be showing, Campbell Family will be there. And my kids will be there as well as tail showing same time slot on Sunday, the twenty sixth, and we will also be there for that. And so just, hey, get out for that, and that's awesome to know and mention that as well. I really appreciate that our community is doing that. Also, another mention, just for eighth grade families, there's future Bearcat Night at MHS, six thirty, eight to eight o'clock. To get your kids ready and they're going to be having their parents. Are there science teachers at P P M S and health teachers at H R M S are getting your kids ready to start their enrollment process for classes for high school, and it is a homework assignment to help your, have your parents help you in that process. So please do that with your kids. Just knowing that as an eighth grade parent, that's something that's going to be a big one. And I know that we have similar things coming up for fifth graders moving up for getting ready for middle school. I think we have the S back coming up, right, Dr. Larson, in the near future. Oh, my son tells me that his E L A teacher, they're already practicing for it, so I know that is coming up as well. And so just getting your kids ready for that, make sure they're hydrated for their tests and well fed and have good sleep and breakfast. And I would love to task Dr. Larson about some of the follow ups. I'd love to know any more information about our upper elementary with our Montessori program. I have some questions about that and would love to see if we can get some follow up on that as well. It'd be very helpful. Thank you.
All right, I'll go next. First, I just want to start off by thanking everyone for coming out tonight. I truly value and appreciate your feedback and input as I continue to learn and grow in this position to better serve the staff, families and students of the Monroe School District. It really takes a team and it takes a whole community, and I'm not here without any of you, so I truly appreciate it. On to some other good news. I know Nathan touched on it briefly, but girls wrestling. We did get an update that I wanted to share with the rest of the community, that girls wrestling is growing and that it's being recognized. We have a few people, a few girls who took took it to the mat and beat their opponent. So we have Joy Hufford, who is a first year wrestler sophomore. She won the regional tournament at a hundred and twenty. Audrey George is a freshman who took third place at the subregional tournament. Haley Carswell is a freshman who took eighth place at the subregional tournament. And we also have an exchange student who joined girls wrestling this year, which is absolutely fantastic. And Jeremiah, I'm going to need your help. I do not want to pronounce her name wrong. Right here.
Claudia Izquierdo. Del Arco.
Okay, and she took eighth place. So job well done, ladies. I'm very impressed and I'm really excited to see that this program is growing and is doing well. Other updates, I've been watching all of the legislative stuff and my goodness, there is so much on there. When you go and you look and you just see the, the different bills that have been proposed in the House and in the Senate, it is a very long list. I, nothing has gone to the floor for a vote yet. We have things that have passed out of committee that are being referred to ways and means or to appropriation. And I am keeping track of everything that is happening with that. So as things start to come about and things start to pass that affect what it is that we're doing here, I'll make sure that I give updates on those things. And obviously, if you have questions, feel free to direct them to me and I will try to help get answers for your questions as best I can. So, yeah, I think that's all I've got for today.
I had the opportunity to go to Frank Wagner Literacy Night on Tuesday, January thirty first. The theme of the night was Reading Builds Community. This was an event set up by the teachers at Frank Wagner, Principal Hugo Morlina and Chris Cronus from the District Office. I had a delightful time visiting classrooms and speaking with teachers from kindergarten through fifth grade. I really enjoyed going to the classroom, speaking with the teachers and looking at reports and projects. I had the opportunity to learn about each grade, what they were doing, what they were going through and how the kids were being taught through this subject. I really enjoyed talking with the teachers, Frank Wagner. We have some great teachers, smart, knowledgeable, very friendly. I found it interesting to learn about the dual language program, especially learning that a pair of teachers work with the same students. Half the students go and learn a topic in English and the other half will learn a topic in Spanish and then they switch. And this is something I want more, I want to learn more about. One item that I took away was children being prepared for kindergarten. I had a lengthy discussion with two kindergartner teachers about the makeup of the class and instructing students. Some students were not prepared and ready to come to classrooms environment. They did not know their letters or numbers or even basic classroom behavior. This demonstrated to me the importance of having preschool education and child preparedness for school. If a student starts out behind with reading, he or she will be catching up for the rest of the class throughout their throughout their career. Next, I wanted to talk about the superintendent selection. First off, one of the qualifications for being a board member is have a stone face, not to have any type of reactions. I made a reaction I shouldn't have, not going to apologize for it, but you have to have a stone face. I wanted to smile a couple of times because there were some funny things, but you can't do that either. So just wanted to throw that in there. I wanted to review the process that we went through for the superintendent selection. I think we did an excellent job. And I'm proud of how we handled it. The first thing we did was started in November, which was a competitive advantage in terms of getting a superintendent selection selected. First, we went to, we had a community survey through the thought exchange. We had five hundred and thirty participants. We went through the key characteristics that they were looking for was having strong communication and relational skills, being respectful and reputable, an experienced leader, foster a team culture, be compassionate and caring, engage in the community, have high expectations for student behavior, prioritizes diversity, equity and inclusion. And from that, we developed a leadership profile, which took into account those characteristics. This was provided to the applicants to get an idea of the background about Monroe, some of the pluses and minuses and what the shareholders in the district were looking for. Then we posted the job to the to the community, to the superintendent community. And we had a report from H Y A about the results. There were thirty six percent female, sixty six percent male, thirty percent were from underrepresented backgrounds, seventy eight for from Washington State, twenty two from out of state, forty one were current superintendents, forty six had district level administrator experience and ten percent had experience with levies. So from that, we had twenty one applicants that we had a meeting and narrowed it down to six. And as we went through those six, we looked at the leadership profile, which was what we received the community input from. And with a public meeting for the six candidates, we didn't have that in public because some of them were still employed and could jeopardize their position. So we wanted to have the best opportunity, but not jeopardize their position. When we spoke to these six candidates, we had all the same questions as were through the remainder of all the interviews. So there wasn't any differences and they received the same equal opportunity. And then from that, we chose three finalists. In the final day, I call that the show, the parade. These four candidates, these three candidates were paraded around and it must have been an exhausting experience. They toured three schools. They were interviewed separately from the groups that I'm going to mention with specific questions that were applicable to their position. They spoke with and interviewed the district cabinets, district office, community panel, principals and assistant principals, certified staff, which are teachers, student council and classified staff. So as we were going through the selection of the candidates was very difficult, but we kept on. H Y A, the, the firm we use, kept on directing us back to see if it, if they fulfilled the leadership profile. And what was interesting as it was a fourteen hour day for me, I got there at eight o'clock in the morning and it was at eight or nine o'clock when we finished. During the discussion, well, throughout the day, as input came from the Google document we had, what are, what do you like about the candidate and what are your concerns? As each group interviewed, we would look at the results. We'd look at the, the classified staff, the certified staff, the principals. So we went up, I went through this, I could speak for myself. I went through that throughout the entire day. And as we were looking and meeting to decide which superintendent we would select, I kept on going back to these comments. We had, it was a very difficult decision. They were both equally qualified. All of them were equally qualified and superior cabinet candidates. And as we were discussing, the entire time I was going back to my Google documents and I was looking at, what did the principal say? What does the cabinet say? What are the classified? Do the, the pros for each of those candidates, are they same among the different categories being interviewed? What are some cons? When we received the documents from like the principals or like the classified staff, they would have, as I said, specific questions for that group. And then they would have them by the candidate. So each of the three, they would have the pros and cons. So as they finished the interview, they would give us input about what they liked and didn't like. And as we were going through the meeting, I kept on going back and looking at what the teachers, the principals, the staff and the community members were looking at. You know, I got, I got to one point in the interview process where I, I don't know if I said it out loud or I just told it to myself, I didn't want this responsibility. This is a huge responsibility. I wish I wasn't here. I wish somebody else was making it. And we had a robust conversation. H Y A kept on referring us back to the leadership profile, which was, as I said, given to us from the community. And my fellow board members, we had pluses and minuses for each of the candidates. I wish Sarah was there to have given us input from her side because she's very, very sharp individual. Anyway, from that, the best candidate was Sean Woodward. There was an agreement for that and we came out and in an open pub, in an open meeting and made that selection. So I feel totally confident about the, this selection. Or I wanted to add, one of the things when I was talking to some principals, what they gave me, in which I used as part of my decision-making process, is were they going to stay around Monroe or were they career jumping? So do they have a commitment to the Monroe? Are they willing to stay here and be here multiple years? Whether they were high school principals, whether they were familiar with P L C, professional learning communities. And then personally, what I looked at was items of integrity, honesty and a track record that we looked at from our resumes and the information provided from H Y A. So it was a very difficult process and I feel that Sean Woodward is going to do an excellent job for the school district. And I think that will be apparent as he starts his role here as superintendent. January first, January, July first of this year. That's all.
Thanks, Chuck. Well, I'll be super honest, I probably should, I mean, I battled with it because I'm like, I only got three and a half hours of sleep, but that's the reality of the past two weeks. It's, it's been kind of hard to sit with some of the things that we've heard. And it made me, it made me really sad to see how much of a distraction some of the things had caused because it was a really, really great process with H Y A and a really great experience. And and it was really good to see so many people come together. And that made me really sad because so much work had gone into that. I've sat in this chair as board president since December, November. I don't know, it's been a long five years. It has, it's been like a year, a year and two months, I think. And I have tried my best to learn from my mistakes, to do better, to continue communicating and holding our ethical consciousness and our integrity at the center of everything that we do. So I, I was really sad the past couple of weeks. I'm really happy to see so many of our community members come out today though. I think it takes a lot of bravery and courage to be so honest and transparent and have a microphone. So I appreciate that our community showed up. So I appreciate that our community showed up. I appreciate that everyone's was respectful. I mean, I couldn't hear it, you know, if you weren't, but from what I could see, what I could sense in the room, there was a lot of respect, even with differing opinions, and I really appreciate that because it didn't always feel that way. So, uh, that leads me to believe that we have grown, that we're progressing, that we're getting better, not only as a board, but also in our community. I can only be accountable to the things that I, I have control over what I do. I am also an elected official. I was voted into this position. And so as a board president, as your board chair, I sat with, what is it that I could have done better? What is it that I can do better moving forward? And that was a lot of my communication, I think, recently, but I'm still committed to building trust. I can speak for myself. I am one of four. And so I'm still committed to building that mutual trust. I, um, and I just sat with, what is it that I can do better? Again, as a leader, I can take accountability for including more workshops, including more learning, um, in really establishing a schedule, a calendar for our board, for our board retreat. Um, and continue to set the example that I hope to continue to see in our community. But again, really sad, but also hopeful because what I saw tonight in a room with differing opinions looked and felt very different from what it was a year ago. And clear is kind. So I will continue to do my best to be clear, to be clear with our community, to be clear with our board. And to continue to be transparent and honest and committed to doing good work for our students and keeping our students at the center of it. Because I can't wait to talk about early childhood education. I cannot wait to talk about P L Cs. I cannot wait. I sat in a counseling meeting last week at the high school. Can't wait to talk about how we can support our students, our M L L students. Can't wait to have those conversations about facilities. I can't wait to have a presentation about P L Cs and the amazing work that's going on there. Just stay, stay committed, stay committed. I know, I know, but stay committed. It's hard, and we're learning, and, um. I wish I could say I'll be perfect moving forward, and I know I won't, but I am committed to continuing to do good work. And I just think our community, I think our district office, I think our teachers, I think our building leaders. Jessie, thank you. Thank you, Holly and Marcy, and thank you just our entire community for showing up, showing out and showing us how it's done. Sometimes, you know, it's, uh, it's reciprocated. So I appreciate you all so very much. And, um, it's a great day to be a Bearcat. Okay. It is seven thirty-eight P M., and tonight's meeting is adjourned.